Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 8, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meetings on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org, and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene", meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods". Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Ham?
Here.
Commissioner Hickey?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Vice Chair Simmons?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here. We are also joined this evening by Community Development Director David Loyah. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak on one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make comments on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the "raise hand" icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please? Good evening.
Hi there. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm John Pitlik. I'm a representative of Northern California Carpenters Union. I'm currently working out of 751 right in Eureka. I'd like to speak a little bit about the importance of labor standards and wages and benefits, and why they matter for both workers and businesses. Fair wages are essential for economic stability and worker satisfaction. When wages are in line with area standards, employees are more likely to stay with their employers, leading to lower turnover and increased productivity. It also helps to ensure that workers are compensated fairly for their skills and economic necessities for their location. Wages aren't the only component for fair compensation. Benefits matter, too. Health insurance, retirement plans, and vacation are just as important in ensuring an employee's well-being. Just as with wages, benefits should be competitive and meet or exceed area standards to support workers in both their personal and professional lives. By maintaining labor standards, we promote income equality. It creates a more equitable environment for all employees, ensuring that everyone is treated fairly. Labor standards aren't just numbers. They're a reflection of fairness and respect for workers. By ensuring compensation is aligned with area standards, we can create a more balanced and thriving economy for both employees and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Joanne McGary, and three things I want to talk about are the Climate Action Plan, bicycle parking, and Sorrel Place incident to share with you. So, Climate Action Plan, I haven't really kind of finished the whole thing, but the public hearings closed now. But, again, it's now in our faces again to consider, and so you're the Planning Commission. You're planning for the future. Just remember, please, the Climate Action Plan must be first and foremost. And that comes down to transportation, which is a big, huge issue. I just acquired, as you may have noticed me zooming in here on my new electric bike. I'm having to park it currently inside my apartment, blocking my hallway, kind of taking up space, living space, when I have a parking space allotted me, but a bike like that in an open parking space in the back of an apartment complex is not ideal. So, in the future, as we're designing new construction, remodeled constructions, additions, and all that kind of thing, in addition to bike lanes and all that, we really need people to have a good incentive to get a means of transportation that's not a car, and have a safe place to park it. And that kind of brings me to the place that was reviewed up on Valley West, the new apartment complex. It was told that, you know, what kind of storage, bikes, parking storage were you going to have there? And I have yet to see it to know if it really kind of exists when they built it. So, my final thing in a minute is I had the opportunity to see a great jazz show at the Playhouse and walked home on Saturday night, passed Sorrel Place, and noticed the lights on in the lounge area there. And the moment I saw these young men in black in there, the lights were on, and all of a sudden the fire alarm went off, and they went dashing out the door. And it's, again, a big concern about the type of housing we build. It's great to have facades look really good, but we really need to have the inside monitored in a much better way. A young mother was there saying, "My children freak out when this goes off all the time." And I waited around, and no police nor fire department showed up, and the fire alarm went off. Sorrel Place has always been a big concern to me, and the future cannot be like Sorrel Place for housing.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody waiting online to join us? Okay. Well, thank you all for your comments. We appreciate your participation and input. And we will now move to item three on our agenda this evening, Consent Calendar. We have one item on consent. Approve Planning Commission Minutes for our regular meeting, March 25, 2025. Would any commissioner like to pull the item or make a motion?
I can make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Does anyone want to make a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, and so we will move on to business items, the next item section on our agenda this evening. And first, on our first business item this evening, is to provide direction on the Community Benefits Program. We're coming back to this after having spent some time considering the community benefits at our early March meeting. We'll use the framework this evening to make brief pitches for changes we would like to see, and we will use negative polling and gradients of agreement to make decisions. And I would ask David if you could just review those quickly so we all understand what we're talking about, and then we'd like to begin with a staff report.
Sure, yeah. For the framework that's included in your packets tonight, it is much more extensive than we necessarily need to go into. It was used when we were going through the general plan update, and we wanted to make sure that there was timely review of Commissioner comments that were coming in after the packet was published. So, there's a lot of detail in the framework that isn't necessarily used for your deliberations tonight, but the framework does provide for decision-making process in terms of making very brief pitches. If there's a counterproposal, someone can make that counterproposal, and then you get sort of last word rebuttal if necessary. And so, we can rely on that more structured framework if we need to. Several of you did provide comments in advance, and those are included in the packet. For those who didn't get a chance to send those in before the packet was published, that's okay. We can go ahead and have those conversations tonight as well. In terms of the polling, these strategies were used to try and build consensus with the general plan process, and in order to move the decision-making along, these straw polling techniques are designed to get a quick consensus. First, by negative polling. Negative polling is that the chair would ask, "Is there anyone opposed to moving forward with the proposal that was made?" And so, let's assume that Commissioner Hickey makes a proposal. There's no one who wants to make a rebuttal. The chair could then say, "Is anyone opposed?" If no one's opposed, we're moving forward with that change. If it gets a little bit, if consensus is more difficult to build that way, then gradients of agreement would be used. Gradients of agreement run from a scale of one to five, one meaning I'm all in, five meaning I would stop this, I would vote no. And the gradients in between that, you know, I'm leaning towards no, but I'm not going to stop it. I don't have a, you know, a real strong opinion in the middle, or I'm leaning towards yes, and I'd like to see it move forward, but I'm not, you know, a cheerleader here. So, we could use those gradients of agreement to find where the vote might land. If there's a majority of you who are, you know, not going to stop the proposal, then that would be accepted. So, I guess the question is, does that make sense? And is everyone willing to use the framework and the gradients of agreement, negative polling, to get through this material? Oh, that was one. You're one on the gradient. Okay. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Simmons has registered his strong support. Okay, yeah, let's...
Using negative polling, I would say, does anyone have a problem moving ahead with the meeting using this framework?
Okay. Fantastic. We've already got the hang of it.
Staff report.
So, in terms of the staff report, I don't have much. I do have the table that we continue to work on up on the screen here. As noted last time, there was one important community benefit that was lacking, and that was that we had committed to the Salk Program, the Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Program, that we would have a community benefit where people could contribute towards a land trust, and so I've added that to the bottom here. I've coded it green. Staff strongly recommends that we include this, since it was a commitment to a grant, T. Other than that, we did have comments come in from Commissioners Tagney, Vice Chair Simmons, and Commissioner Lehman that are in the packet. They're all in kind of different formats, and so I think that what I'd like to do is to just turn it back over to the commission, and perhaps we can go through these, you know, one by one. There's not that many. I think we can get through them relatively quickly. And then I'll have the commissioners represent your comments when it gets, you know, when time comes to that. For those of you who didn't submit comments, feel free to jump in now. And that's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone on the commission want to ask any clarifying questions for staff before we go to public comment? Okay. With that, I'm going to open public comment. If you are here in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the "raise hand" icon on the right-hand side of your screen, or by pressing star nine on your phone, and the clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and in all honesty, I haven't done my homework. And it's really difficult to ask for public comment, I think, sort of before you folks do some comment. At the city council meetings, it's discussed on the dais, and then they open it up for public comment oftentimes. So, I'm sort of suggesting that maybe we consider that, so that, you know, I have a moment to think about what you, who are the elected or appointed representatives, have to think about something, and then I can put my two cents in worth to your 50 cents' worth of opinions on these things. So, the order of public comment is just sort of a little concerning because not all members of the public have the opportunity, like you do, to look at everything in detail and have the history of what you've been going through. So, I just wanted to kind of suggest that maybe reconsider when public comment happens.
Thanks for that, Joanne. I think the alternate view there is that it's an opportunity for the public to make comment before we deliberate, so that we deliberate, having had the benefit of public input. But I hear your point, and thank you. Is there anyone online that wants to join us? Okay. Well, then, given that, let's, who would like to start? Matt, why don't you go first?
I'm happy to go first. So, I basically just wrote up which ones I would keep and which ones I would remove, and for the ones I said I would remove, I gave a very short explanation. So, maybe the most efficient way is to just go through the ones I said I would remove, and then we can kind of discuss each of those.
Yeah, I think because we have kind of a list format, maybe we just start with the top one, and then y'all can... Yeah, we could just start with the top one and run through them. I think we'll get through these relatively quickly. For those of you who, you know, have an opinion, I mean, like, the first one, you know, Matt had put a clear, you know, statement on this one. I don't think anybody else addressed this necessarily in writing, so he can go ahead and kick it off, and then if people have comments, they can respond to those.
Do you have a question, Peter?
What if I agreed with, like, mostly all of Matt's? And what if the whole commission mostly agreed with all of Matt's? Because then that would knock out that whole group.
That would be a very quick negative polling exercise, I guess.
I still think we probably need to go through them one by one, just to ascertain that. Go ahead, Peter.
I made a list of thoughts, which I did not include in the packet, but let me at least express them now. I think we urgently need more housing, but it was interesting in the Housing Progress Report that the housing that we're lacking is the above-moderate housing. So, that being true, I was cautious about providing community benefits for affordable and mixed-unit sizes and other specialty kinds of housing, because that's not our greatest need. I feel that energy and water conservation benefits are crucial. I gave them high marks. I feel that open space, natural areas, and creek and wetland restoration are important to almost everyone in Arcata. I gave them high marks. I think biking, and Joanne just said this, biking and electric vehicle issues address both climate change and health, so I rated those as important. And this may agree with most of what Matt had to say, by the way. I thought that there are numerous possibilities for historic preservation in Arcata. I've lived here a long time, and I've seen some really nice buildings be destroyed, and it was very sad. So, I think that's important. And I'm, one more thing. I'm generally not in favor of a fee in lieu of some positive action. That makes me nervous. It's a way to buy your way out to a benefit, and I would much rather see a positive change than just a contribution to a fund. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. So, Matt, we're ready.
Well, okay, so I think we're just going to go down each one, but I had suggested we remove this one. I remember the discussion we had when it was added, and the idea that it was that it would sort of diversify the inside of the buildings, right? You know, three-bedroom units next to one-bedroom units. I understand the benefit of that, sort of abstractly. I don't know that it's good enough to sort of make it onto this list, especially if we're trying to pare it down. And so, that is my, it's not that I have anything against this. It's just that I feel like other things on this list are stronger, and I would rather see a developer pick other things on this list.
Does anyone have a rebuttal to that position?
I'd like to hear from staff why that is considered a benefit to the community.
I think just in brief, so that we are incentivizing, you know, mix of units instead of what we're seeing right now, where everybody's kind of targeting the micro unit. But honestly, the market is going to settle this. There's only so many of those studios you can build before, and that was sort of the basis of this, you know, sort of the underlying principle of this whole planning effort, was that the market is going to make decisions, and as long as it's, you know, corralled within, you know, broad policy directions set by the city, that that was okay, instead of trying to micromanage every little development decision.
Ashton?
Yeah, I guess I want to just say I do see community benefit with a mix of unit sizes. I think it does kind of allow for a mix of income levels as well, even though that's not stipulated by the size, but you will inevitably get a cross-section of folks living together, and I think it also encourages a type of living in community that's not standard. And I think it actually allows for quite interesting buildings. And oftentimes, as you're kind of assembling buildings, you're, you know, like, laying out the initial plans, it's beneficial to have a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom and a studio all on the same floor, or just to kind of actually build out the arrangement. And so, I agree with you, David, that the market, you know, has something to say, but I also think, you know, before, like, I guess we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where six buildings have come up and they're studio one-bedrooms only, and we find ourselves in need of three-bedroom apartments. That being said, I don't want to, like, belabor this, or like, make it last for a long time, so I'm happy to move forward. With removing it, I just think, you know, architecturally and, you know, from a kind of social perspective, having a mix of unit sizes is pretty beneficial.
I think it's helpful. I just, I think I agree with Matt, that I'm not sure it belongs on the list of community benefits, while I still think it's a valuable goal. Is that agreed? Abby?
Kind of on the fence. After growing up in a lot of apartment buildings, I do remember, like, always thinking, like, "Oh, we've got the four-bedroom, and like, that person's got the two-bedroom, and it's like, this is a family over here, but this is, like, college kids over here," and it does create, like, different cultures. And, sorry, I'm on the fence.
Peter?
So, just in terms of the process, if you wanted to stick with the framework, it'd be rebuttal, and then take a vote, see where you're at. If you kind of end up mixed, maybe have a little more discussion about it. So, I'll leave it up to you how you want to, you know, kind of run those discussions.
That sounds good. I'm counting at least four in favor. Where does, so, show of hands, who would be in favor of Matt's proposal to take this off? Okay, so that passes. Let's move on to the next one. I had keep for this one. Did anyone want to remove it? Okay, so that's a keep.
To me, it seems like a good idea, but I don't think a developer is going to go for it, because it's going to increase the cost and make developments less possible. I mean...
Sorry, are you still talking about 40% of units?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding is that the universal design is actually not that much more expensive. It's just different design decisions. And having said that, this is a community benefit that a developer can elect into. It's not required.
Fine, but I'm not going to vote against it. You can see I have a three on it, but, yeah, I don't think it's real valuable. I don't think a developer will choose it.
I question to the commission how this benefits the community. If some renters require these kind of units, I can see that, but is that maybe something that the market would handle? And/or just basic code design criteria, like the mobility issue? You know, thresholds are almost non-existent anymore in standard design. I just don't know where the community benefits from this as much as a very targeted audience.
Follow-up there, Matt?
I think the idea here was that the universal design is adaptable to people with different abilities, and so it is, it creates a housing stock that is more accessible, more welcoming to a broader range of folks. So, I think that's how it benefits the community, is that it ensures that you have, you know, open accessibility for a broad range of folks. And we had, you know, affordable housing in here. We have, you know, these requirements for, you know, universal design. It also means that, you know, if someone's abilities change, that they don't have to get a new housing unit just because they are now, you know, altered in their abilities. So, I think that was the thinking behind it. This was brought to our attention by a couple of different members of the public, but, you know, it was advocated by, you know, by several.
I guess I also want to add that oftentimes, like, accessible units or mobility units are using code minimums, so kind of the bare minimum of what you could do. And oftentimes, people with different abilities have conflicting spatial needs, and so, universal design really tries to understand that and gives a more generous, you know, spatial allowance for various bodies with various needs. So, I see this as a huge community benefit.
While our mic is on, we also live in a community that has really elevated disability rates compared to the rest that has really elevated disability rates compared to the rest of the state. So I'd be in support.
Are there any of these units in Homewalk County?
Yeah, there's a minimum requirement for accessible units in multifamily projects. So all multifamily projects are built with both accessible and adaptable units. Universal design goes, you know, a little bit farther than that. And, you know, just sort of plans for, you know, accessibility in many different ways. So, yes, we do have some.
How about a show of hands for anyone that's opposed to keeping this in? If you're opposed? Okay, so let's keep that and move on.
I had keep for this one. If anyone wants to say that they wanted to remove it.
Is anyone opposed to keeping this in?
I wonder if, Peter, you talked about the in-lu fund. Is that something we wanna just touch on, 'cause it comes up a couple of times? And I would like to just point out that I really appreciate the 1.5%. That's the comment that I made to the commission in writing, that I would love to see that more often. Like, there's one down here about native plants, native planting. And there's no boundaries about it. Just like, well, how many do I have to plant? You know, what if I plant 10 things by the creek? Is that gonna sign me off? And that's the community benefit I've satisfied? While others are paying 1.5% of construction cost. It's a very broad spectrum, and I'd love to see us figure out how to tighten some of these. And we have that option right now. We can amend these. We don't have to just yes or no, and we can amend them.
If I could just real quick, for the in-lu fees, I think that, you know, Commissioner Lehman brings up an important point. When it comes to, for instance, affordable housing, the city's already made the decision not to allow in-lu fees, but that they would have to, you know, the projects would have to actually build out the affordable housing, instead of putting that burden somewhere else. There are certain areas, like, you know, procuring conservation easements, where, you know, on a one-off project-by-project, you're just not gonna have enough money to actually buy a conservation easement of any substantial form, unless we had like a conservation easement bank that you could purchase credits from. So I think the idea here was that, you know, the city would maintain a fund, work with a land trust, identify properties. And these are long-term, big projects that, you know, these fees likely would not be the sole source for. They'd have to be partnered with, you know, other funding types. There's, you know, differences in the way they would be applied. But I think Commissioner Tagney's point is well-made, that we did build this where, you know, some of these are, you know, less of a cost to the project than other things. And what we attempted to do, if you'll recall from the, you know, the structure, was to ensure that there were a certain number of points required, and that you had to get them in different categories. And so that prevented anyone from just, you know, taking the bottom, you know, cheapest, easiest thing every single time. And then, we also discussed having, you know, sort of a limit once you have a certain number of pocket parks. You don't need any more pocket parks. And maybe we remove that from the community benefits table. Just as a reminder about those couple of conversations that happened previously.
That's helpful. How about a show of hands for anyone that wants to remove this 1.5% construction cost? Okay, let's keep it and move on.
Last note on this, this is actually the Salk. So we didn't, we didn't lose it. Just gonna put a note in here, so we don't lose it again.
I suggested we remove this one. My reasoning is that although it can be helpful, it is not as much of a community benefit as some of the other things on this list. And that if a employer really sort of wants this, they'll probably do it on their own without encouragement from us.
Any opposing views on that, Peter?
You bet. I think it's really important, and I think we should give high priority to it. Because if we're trying to get people out of cars, this is exactly what has to happen. And my understanding was, we had a discussion about this last time, is this would be for the business on the bottom floor that, you know, had employees. It's not for the apartments.
Show of hands for people that are opposed to removing this from community benefits.
Opposed to removing it. Okay.
Who wants to keep it?
Yeah.
I would love to see a little more structure on it. I, from the criteria I just explained previously, I don't quite know what it means. One shower, how big of a building, you know, two showers? I don't wanna spend forever on this, but I don't quite know what that means.
I think at this point, it would probably be good to, like, win over the list, and then where we need to find specificity. Unless it's really, truly, you know, you're, you know, going to vote yes or no, depending on that specificity. We could probably have that conversation later. If you could say, well, I would like to keep this on, because I wanna see, you know, 10 showers per 100 jobs. We could have that conversation later.
Abby?
I personally have not liked this one from the beginning, and I've wanted to remove it. And so I think if we did like a hard straw poll, that it would result in it being removed potentially. So that's up to you, Scott.
Yeah. Again, show of hands, opposed to removing it? Okay. So, we're gonna keep that. Or, we're going to, we're gonna remove it. Okay, next one.
I had keep for this one. If anyone wants to say they want to remove it.
Is there any further, I guess there isn't, 'cause we're looking at the totality of the thing. But, like, stipulation on offering it to a childcare business and at what cost? 'Cause space is only one part of the childcare delivery equation.
Yeah, I mean, we hadn't contemplated that yet. But I think, you know, obviously, there would have to be a functioning childcare or senior service center at the end of that. So they'd have to work out those details. And there are a couple of, you know, well-established providers in the area. So, you know, I think they could help, you know, inform that.
I guess that does sort of raise a question about, like, if the design of the project has one of these, but then they never fill it with a childcare center, what happens, right? Like, is there any sort of follow-up from the city?
Yeah, no, I think the detail to this would have to be that they have, you know, something worked out, where they've got a, you know, at least an initial. I mean, there's no way to say, oh, with it, you know, this is the company that's gonna be in here in perpetuity. But, you know, childcare facilities do tend to, you know, you know, last, and most developers don't wanna build a vacant space in their building just so they can check off a box. They'd be designing it with the purpose in mind. You know, either they need it for their, you know, employees, or, you know, they, you know, have some other reason for being drawn to this. And that they would, you know, pursue the, you know, necessary, you know, leases and agreements to make sure that, you know, it rolled out.
Show of hands, people that want to keep this? Okay, we'll keep and move on.
I had keep for this one, but I did think we should explicitly state how far beyond the minimum requirements we were going. I had suggested either 15 or 20% beyond the minimum requirements, so that it, sort of what Dan was talking about, we need like a hard number on this, rather than just, you know, one extra vehicle charger getting you in.
I'll point out that 15% doesn't get you much unless you have six or seven to begin with. You know, it's gonna round up to zero.
Would you suggest higher?
Yeah. 20, 25. I mean, 20, you'd get one for every five, right? So, that sounds good.
I feel bad, 'cause I think this is probably discussed. But is there an existing incentive for that elsewhere in state policy? Like, would they be doubling up on incentives?
Yeah, and I think the discussion that we had before is that, you know, we wanna focus on community benefits that are beneficial to the community, regardless of whether or not they're, you know, other, you know, regardless of the cost. There was a discussion for a period of time with the Planning Commission about, you know, how much would this particular benefit cost versus that? And some of the community benefits, like, you know, rapid production of housing, they're, basically, you're just giving someone a community benefit point for being, you know, first-in, for, you know, coming out and developing something relatively soon. So some of these things are gonna be, you know, inherent, built into the project. Some of them are gonna cost very little, and some of them are gonna cost a lot. And the question, I think, that I'd like us to focus on is, you know, what do we want to see for our community? The beauty of the community benefit program is that we don't have to have the same, we're not tied to the same sort of nexus and proportionality requirements that we are for conditions of approval for, you know, standard discretionary permit process. We can ask for whatever it is that we want. And so, you know, let's, you know, start, at least at this stage, by focusing on what we want, and less on, you know, how much is it gonna cost the developer? I think to, you know, Commissioner Lehman's point, the more that these things cost the developer, the less likely it is that we're gonna get anything developed in the first place. And so, if we can find community benefits that are embedded in the cost of doing the development, we're ensuring that those projects are building that community benefit that we want. And we're also not putting up something that's gonna be cost prohibitive to development to begin with.
Given that, show of hands for keeping this electrical-vehicle-charging requirement in the community benefits? Okay, keeping? As amended. Moving on.
I'm a strong keep on this one.
Does everyone agree? Show of hands for keep? Keeping, moving on? Support? Do you wanna talk about special?
Special-needs housing. And so I think the idea behind this was, you know, not to be specific, but that if there was a housing that was developed that was specifically addressing individuals who needed, you know, additional support. So I suppose this could be anything from, you know, mental or physical ability issues. I think that's the idea here.
Does it have to be 100%?
Could be whatever the Planning Commission recommends, and the City Council adopts.
We did 40 for the other one, if you wanna lower it.
Yeah, 40 or 50 sounds more plausible.
I'd recommend just including it in the previous provision for streamlining purposes.
Yeah, that works.
The previous one being the universal design?
Is design different than actually providing care, though? I feel like they're sort of different. And I guess we could, we could make one that sort of either do this or do this. But I just think we should be clear about that.
Ashton?
Yeah, I think that with universal design, that's more about kind of spatial requirements of individual elements within various units and the building as a whole. But the special-needs housing would most likely require services being provided on-site. And so I see them as different pathways. And I see that if services are being incorporated into the building design, having it, like, it, this is up to the developer, but it doesn't necessarily make sense for it to only be a portion of that. If you're committing for space in the building to provide services, having it be a larger percent of the project is beneficial. 100%, you know, maybe there could be one or two units that weren't served by this supportive services. But, you know, I guess I'm okay lowering it from 100%. But I think it's unlikely that a developer would choose special-needs housing for only 40% of a project.
What do you suggest?
I'm gonna go ahead and counter and say I've seen it done successfully at 50%, where it was 50% like artist, work-live-lofts, and 50% folks who needed supportive housing. But...
Let's say 50.
So, 50? We lowered it to 50%.
Keep and move on.
I think we already nixed this one, because the city doesn't want more publicly-owned open space.
Correct. So, 11?
Steph, is there a way to describe this as private, privately-owned public space? Is that the intention here? 'Cause we've discussed both.
Yeah, I think, I think if it's onsite, public, open space, yeah, this would be publicly-accessible, private, open space, which is already a requirement now in the code. And so, you know, again, I guess this is one of those, you know, this is a situation where we're actually specifying a, you know, development cost, whereas there's no requirement. A publicly-accessible, private, open space could be a courtyard between buildings that multiple businesses put tables and chairs out to allow the public to sit while they eat the food that they purchased there. Or it could be, you know, a very intricate, you know, playground space with, you know, lots of nice botanical, you know, samples. I don't know where I'm going with this. But you get the picture. Like, it, they could be really different spaces. So this would encourage them to invest money in it, I think is the idea. But, yeah, we had this grade out before, because there was a discussion to remove it.
Sorry, and I misspoke earlier. There's another community benefit further down this list that specifically says dedicate to the city. And that was what we removed.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought this was private space that was open to the public. That's how I read it. Not that it was space that the city had to maintain. And I think it's a great idea.
Raise of hands in favor of this, keeping this in as a private? Keep? Move on to 11?
Think this was addressed in the one above?
Yeah.
Establish and maintain a minimum three years of project-based electric car share program or pay into the Transportation Fund equal to.
Yeah, so this one's bike share. That's the difference.
Oh, sorry.
And so, I think, yeah. I don't know if folks have thoughts on bike share.
I think we had talked previously about potentially having it worded to combine it with the city's existing efforts, to be some sort of partnership there, which I think would be pretty great.
Yeah, I think this was one of the ones that I was in favor of. Yeah, I think this was one of the ones that I was in favor of collapsing into the, the Transportation Fund. I just think that leaving it up to the citing of wherever development is going to happen is going to lead to nonsensical, possible nonsensical results for citing for a bike share program.
It seems that we discussed that the technology might race ahead of this opportunity as well.
I think as it's currently, sorry, I haven't written differently here than it is up there, but I had it with an oar of, you know, one point five percent to the city's bike share. And so, would that sort of meet what you were saying? And then, maybe you don't have that problem of it being so site-specific, but it goes to everyone?
Yeah, and I think, I think I tend to agree that having this on a project-based electric bike share program, you know, the idea here was that these wouldn't be bikes that were accessible to the public necessarily. These would be bikes that were accessible to the residents, similar to the, the project-based car share program, to try and give people alternatives to owning vehicles and having, you know, space established for them to, to go ahead and share those. So, that, that was the intent behind this. So, it's, it's slightly different than the public bike share program, which is just open to anyone.
So, can I propose that we change this one to, you know, one point five percent to the public city bike share program as the community benefit? And so, then it's not the, you know, residence-only bike share, but it, it sort of increases our citywide bike share.
I mean, is there a staff, I think the question is, is there a reason from staff not to do that?
No, I, I, I don't think there is a reason not to do that. One point five percent to a bike share program is going to be a load of money. That's going to be a lot of money for bike share, maybe more than we can actually use. So, just putting that out there.
Go ahead, Amanda.
So, I think it was, there's one that's like one point five that goes for bike infrastructure, trails, lanes, et cetera. If we put it in there, that gives you flexibility for different uses. Is that helpful?
Yeah. And so, maybe just be explicit that bike share program is in that transportation bucket as well.
Number twenty-five on our list.
Yeah, so just add the bike share to this list and keep that.
Show hands in support of that suggestion? Okay, done.
Dan, do you want to suggest some way to make this more concrete? I think we all like the idea of native plants, right?
You know, native planting is, is cool. It's, you know, we see it a lot. There's a lot of good reasons to do it, and it's lower maintenance. I just, I don't want staff to end up, like, having to interpret that on each project.
One grass, you know, or something?
Yeah, yeah, we did it. It's right down there by the creek. See it? So, I don't know. One point five percent sounds like a lot, but...
Be a really beautiful native plant design, right?
If one point five percent of the budget goes towards that, it seems like, David, weigh in on this. Is that one point five a lot? If we're just talking landscaping and... So, we can flirt with other numbers, like point five percent.
I would support point five.
I get, I'm kind of...
I would support point five. Go ahead, Ashton.
Sorry to interrupt. I wonder if it could be reframed and rather than a percent of the project costs, like, a percent of total landscaping planned for the project would be native plants.
The assumption is that every project will have a landscaping budget, which a lot of residential stuff, these days, doesn't in Arcata.
True. Predicated on a, on a landscaping budget. Any other ideas? What about just going with a point five project cost contribution to enhance native plant?
Compromise on one percent?
Sorry, oh, go ahead, Matt.
It looked like David had his hand up, and so I was wondering if, if staff has thoughts on this.
I was just running the numbers. One point five percent of the Soral Place project, for example, would have been three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And, and if you look at the footprint of landscaping at Soral Place, it's miniscule. And they're not adjacent to wetlands and creeks. So, that specifically is about adjacent to...
And so, point five would have been, what, still in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand? I think point five is a better number. Anyone down there? Go ahead, Ashton.
Yeah, I just had a question about the function of this. Is it that if your project is adjacent to wetlands or creeks, then the supplies? Or that whatever project you're doing, you commit this point five percent? And then, the plantings have to go next to, I, can we, like?
That's a good question. Does staff has, have clarity there?
I mean, I think that this could be done if you had, you know, creek running through your property, but you could also collaborate with the city to, you know, do a restoration project. What if it was, you know, what, what's the number we're landing on here, one percent?
Point five.
Point five percent of project cost, cost of restoration of creeks and wetlands?
Adjacent or otherwise, essentially. Correct?
Yeah.
Can I interject really quick?
Please do.
So, one question I have is whether or not parcels are required to have a landscaping plan or something similar. And my second comment is, when it comes to wetlands and creek areas, there's actually like a buffer to the work that you can do in those areas. We don't want just anyone going and planting in wetlands. And typically, that kind of work requires like a restoration, like, some sort of plan and some sort of monitoring. And so, we're signing ourselves up for something that's not supposed to be reviewed later to that extent. Like, I would caution authorizing people to go and do this work without review.
I, I guess the way I'm thinking about this, and again, we can flesh out the details in more depth, but, you know, if you have a, you know, if you have a creek running through your property or you have, you have...
The percentage of the project cost, we're essentially tripling the value to the developer, right? Because it's either three hundred thousand dollars for bikes or a hundred thousand dollars for native landscaping, and you get the same, if they're all going to be worth the same amount of points, you get the same benefit. And so, I, I just want to flag that we're sort of doing that. We're making this one, you know, three times as valuable as the bike one that we just talked about.
The, the underlying assumption is they're, they're not all worth the same points. We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, you're right. We, we talked about it at a previous meeting, but we haven't actually decided on it.
And I think that if, again, we get to the detail, a more detailed structure here, we're just trying to get through the, what are, what are the, the elements going to be? And we'll put, staff will put a proposal together. If you want to come back and say, hey, you know, we really want to make sure that we're enhancing creeks and wetlands. We want to bump this pack up to one and a half percent. And we're going to give it, you know, three points instead of two, or whatever the case may be. I think that's, that's a valid next conversation.
So, for now, show of hands in support of creating this, understanding that we still have to value point system, et cetera, in favor of keeping restoration of creek and wetlands? Pass, moving on.
Public art?
I had keep. I, I, I don't know how I ended up being the first to go on everyone, but I, I had keep.
You're the one that wrote out an answer for everyone.
How silly of me.
Well, it's good. Someone's got to anchor this. Go ahead, Amanda.
I'd counterpropose this one to go down to the point five level as well.
I was also going to say it seems really expensive, like, a lot of money now that we put that into Soral Place perspective.
Hold on, hold on a second, Peter. Ashton?
Oh, did we want to have any sort of contingency for it to be local, like, designed by a local artist or a native artist? I think you're, that, Matt, that's number fourteen, that, that would maybe fit in?
Go ahead, Matt.
So, okay, so installed public art, that would be the developer proposes art, and then it's, it's an objective standard. And so, then the city would just be like, yeah, that's art. But if it goes to the fee, then the arts committee, I can't remember what we call it, would then get to look at it and, like, decide what art goes there. And so, I almost feel like the, the in lieu fee is like a way to still have an objective thing for the developer to do, which is just donate to this fund. But then the city retains some discretion over
Some over, sorry.
what kind of art we want dollars going towards. And so, I, I wonder what everyone else thinks about maybe pushing this more into the in lieu one? I know that you lose the art right next to the new project you built, but maybe it's better in the long run.
My question is, who judges what is art? And who, who at the city is?
We have an art committee that judges what is art.
The, yeah, the city actually has a process that it identified in the, the strategic arts plan. And we rely on the Playhouse Arts, which is our local arts agency, to sort of manage, you know, those, those issues where, you know, I think, you know, Peter, if I'm picking up what you're putting down, the city doesn't want to be engaged in judging art. And so, you know, we have a, a local arts agency who can, you know, who can manage that. And certainly, if, if the funds go to an in lieu fund, that's, you know, you know, we'd have some, you know, that's probably where they would ultimately go to. One thing that we've done throughout the city, if you'll, you know, if you can think of where all the sculptures are, is that we have sort of a standard base that, you know, folks can design their sculpture to. And so, that's perhaps a way where, you know, in combination with this, you know, some, some sort of incentive that's associated with, you know, placing that local art, you know, we already have a process for doing that. Not that all art is going to necessarily be a sculpture, but, you know, there's an, there's probably a way to kind of make sure, if there's a desire, to say that these pieces of art are going to be near the building that, that contributed, that we can, you know, probably do that.
I want to agree with Matt. I'm actually more comfortable with the art agency, or what do we call them, committee, making these decisions than the building applicant, which might be some out-of-town construction company and...
In favor, hands in favor of percentage of construction cost to a fund overseen by the Arcata Arts Experts Committee?
I am, but I'd like to see that explicit in this, that it's...
I just changed it to five percent of the construction cost towards installed public art paid to in lieu fund.
Okay, I think we're going to keep that and keep going.
I had keep.
Is anyone, everyone in support, show of hands in support of the historic preservation? Okay, easy keep, keep moving.
I had keep, but I suggested we set a minimum square footage for this space. I said five hundred in my comments, but I'm open to other suggestions. I just want to make it clear that this isn't like a corner of the room when you walk in or something. It's like an actual space that people can occupy.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'll just point out that for the developer to have to seek out partners from local tribes or tribal organizations is a, could be a difficult task and is probably not one that's going to be chosen.
I think it's okay for this list to be, you know, things we're hoping to see, even if they're not being seen.
Aspirational? Amanda?
I'm probably a, a broken record at this point, so it's kind of obvious. My preference, generally speaking, is to have more flexibility. I think there's a reason we're moving away from social services delivered as they are into universal basic income, right? Because all sorts of things can happen when we over-stipulate. This could combine with the childcare, elder care, and just become, make community space available for an enterprise that offers some sort of, you know, benefit like that. I just think we're going to end up thankful when we did the contributions into the fund and with some funky results when we provide an incentive for developers to interpret and put it in.
As written, show of hands for keeping this as a community benefit? Fail. Is that a fail?
One, two, three, or, yeah, okay.
Next item.
I had keep. And I, I guess I'll just flag that wastewater and concerns about wastewater was like the running theme of the idea of increasing our housing, and so, I feel like that's where this came from. And, and I'm open to hearing from the public and keeping that in the plan as a thing.
Seems pretty easy and fairly well-defined. In favor? Show hands? Okay, keep and move on.
Okay, so, so I wrote a, I didn't write, keep or remove for this one. This is one where I had thoughts. So, I said, given the situation with density bonus, should we either remove this or lower the percentage to make it more meaningful? So, I guess my point is, having a hundred percent affordable building, it feels like you'd already be using the density bonus and, and not going through the community benefit pathway or the extra heat on your building. And so, yeah, so I, my suggestion is either remove this because this is covered through another kind of law, or lower the percentage, right, to something like four or fifty, like we did for the other things, so that it's more likely to actually maybe be used.
Peter?
Isn't it true if it were fifty percent, it would still sort of morph over to density bonus?
Probably, as the density bonus is currently written, but it's, it's also changed quite a lot in recent years and could change again. I just, a hundred is like going far. Ashton is nodding.
You're for removing?
No, I'm for Matt's proposal of lowering the percentage.
To fifty?
Sure, I think we can start there.
And anyone else want to weigh in on this before we go to a vote?
Staff question. Did Soral Place use density bonus?
Soral Place did not use density bonus. They used a tax credit financing that required that it was a hundred percent affordable. And with density bonus, you'll, you know, you are likely to see mixed income projects where they have like fifty percent of the units that are affordable. There's, there's a lot of options in density bonus currently, and I agree, it's going to change. There's no doubt it'll change. But, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. Fifty percent is, is a very nice number.
In support of this at fifty percent? Show of hands. Okay, pass?
I had keep for this one. I, I guess I want to flag that, and I'm, I'm trying to remember a conversation two years ago. I think at one point this was just, you know, a certain percentage of the units are owner occupied. And then we like combined it into inclusionary units are owner occupied. And owner, uh, ownership opportunities was one of the things that like the public talked about a lot. It was in our list of things that came up, uh, in our, and, and right now it's just this inclusionary units are for sale owner occupied. But I guess I want to propose that maybe just having a certain percentage of your units be owner occupied should be its own community benefit.
How about 50%?
Staff question again, sorry. That, are, are there examples of portions of properties locally being owner occupied and the rest of it rental?
Um, we don't have an example of that that I'm aware of locally, but, um, it certainly doesn't strain the imagination. I could see it happening in the future.
I also think it creates a stream for affordable ownership. And I think again introduces a really interesting economic diversity to projects, which I think the city has made a priority, um, both mixed income and kind of diversity of unit type. So I think this is another aspirational one and I'm, I'm happy to see it on this list.
Do you think it should stay as inclusionary units are for sale occupied? Or do you think it should just be a certain percentage of the units in the building are for sale owner occupied?
I mean, I'm, you know, there's also the kind of below market rate ownership model. And so I think this is maybe in that same world, so it, it could be written with different terms. But I'm, what I'm understanding, the intention behind this is just that there are below market rate units available for ownership, which I think is great. And I don't, you know, maybe we should stipulate that it is a portion of them. Or, you know, I don't know that it needs to be a hundred percent of them, but, um, yeah, we can say 50% or start there.
How's the commission feel about that?
Well, is the proposal now 50% and, uh, and/or density bonus units?
Well, and so I guess something I want to flag is at the last city council meeting, they raised the number of units at which the inclusionary zoning begins at to 60, right? And so if it's, you know, 50% of the inclusionary, you, are you going to?
Yeah, no, that's, that's correct. And for a 60 unit project, uh, if it's only inclusionary zoning that we're talking, it's, it's just a few units. Depending on the, um, depending on the, uh, income level, it's either two or four units total. Generally speaking, I mean, I, I think we might be over, overthinking this one a little bit because generally speaking, if someone's going to do a for sale project, they're going to do a for sale project. If they're going to do a rental project, they're going to do a rental project. And I think that the idea here was to try and encourage folks that are doing, uh, that, encourage folks to do, uh, for sale projects because, um, there was a lot of talk about trying to encourage condominiums, encourage homeownership and so on and so forth. Uh, most of the projects are likely to do, uh, that are doing inclusionary units are likely to do rentals. And so I think this was sort of a, a weak policy to pressure in the direction of for sale units.
And, sorry?
I was just going to, um, draw attention to number 27, which might, in its wording, actually just replicate this.
Yeah, the, uh, the only distinction being the other one is for affordable units. These are just owner occupied, so not specifying affordable. But yeah, they are very, very similar.
I'm in favor of 27 and, and eliminating this one.
I, I do think, sorry, now I'm thinking about this more. I, the affordable homeownership as a, as a goal within the project makes sense to me as a community benefit. I don't know what the right mechanism is for requiring it or not requiring it, but encouraging it through the community benefits program.
It seems highly unlikely that a developer would choose this one, you know, out of all the other choices to have the bulk of their project be a rental, oh, but those two inclusionary units I have to sell if I choose this one. Just, I, I, I just don't get it. Um, I think they would move on to other items on the list.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a good idea. Just, I think like Dan, I question the effectiveness, given the amount of work and time we put into inclusionary zoning and all of the other sort of components of it. Go ahead, Amanda.
I think, because I'm, I'm falling into this quagmire of like, how do these things combine to achieve the same result that we then have in a separate, maybe, um, we can say that we'll do a review round at the end of this exercise for harmonization to make sure we haven't, you know, included things twice in different ways. Because we're coming up against it, I think, a little bit.
That sounds like a, a staff review, right? Just for consistency?
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, we'll, we'll look for those ways to combine, um, you know, before we come back with a more formal proposal.
Great.
So did I catch this as a remove?
Sounds like it.
And then this is the one that we already said we would remove.
Yeah.
I'm a strong keep on this one.
My question is that the city has often brought up, and I think we all see it, uh, that there's a lot of extra retail space in the community. I guess this applicant would be knowing that they want retail space anyway, so this is a community benefit they would choose.
I can also suggest that in the, in the observation that we do have a lot of excess commercial retail space on the ground floor. I don't know, you know, and having this be applicable to many parts of the city, right? Where it could actually be beneficial to have more commercial on the ground floor. But it is also beneficial for developers to allow more residential on the ground floor, to get more units, to house more people. So this one's conflicting for me because I think if you're talking about a place downtown, I would say we don't want more ground floor, ground floor commercial. But if we're adding housing to a place where there's like fewer amenities, um, around, that's really great. But again, I, I also like to see the option of being able to include residential on the ground floor, when possible, you know, walk up units, live work, that kind of thing is, is really an awesome type of housing that we don't really have here.
So does the extra bit about resident serving commercial uses? So, because I, I think when we had originally talked about this, the idea was that it would be somewhat limited to like convenience stores or like small little restaurants, like things that are sort of for that little community that you could like walk to and stuff and not like a, like a chain store. That's going to be drawing like a lot of, um, traffic from out of the area. And that that was part of the community benefit of this, that it was, you know, serving that new community, that community that is now denser than it was because this project was built with a new, uh, like kind of local serving commercial.
I think often what you see is that when you're wanting to, I mean, what do I know? But like when you're wanting to secure leases for some of these, you're going to have, you know, more security in a larger business that exists, a CVS, for example, you know, that could fill that. And I think any service on the ground floor would be resident serving because it's just that much closer. So I think this is a tough one for me. I'm, I feel a little bit conflicted about it because I don't think it being resident serving really adds anything unless you're talking about adding a deli slash grocery store to where we don't have a walkable grocery store, you know, like something like that. But I think that that's really location specific and I think that these are trying to be a bit more general.
I can't think of very many places that aren't walkable to retail that any of this would apply to.
You know what I'm going to say? I think it should be a childcare business or an eldercare business or a community space or a convenience store in that we should just combine it all together. In that way, um, the residents or the developer chooses what makes sense at that time and for that place.
I agree.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I, I just feel like this is kind of overly broad and hard to define and I'm not really sure. I'm having a hard time envisioning what this actually is.
So all in favor of removing it?
Favor of removing? Okay, that's a win. Let's remove.
I said remove unless we further specify what this means.
Staff supports removing this. This is.
Favor of removing, show of hands. Okay, remove and move on.
I said keep, but lower to 20 FTEs, uh, because 50 seems incredibly high to me.
50 seems high.
Lower to what number?
I said 20, um, but I'm not a.
Even that seems high.
Okay.
Yeah, I would go for 10.
I'm with Peter. I would say 10.
I think this one's really challenging. I don't, I would recommend removing it. I would also recommend, um, you know, again, I don't know how during the permitting process this is actually being enumerated. I think it's really challenging and then to actually like enforce that in some real way. This does not make sense to me at the time of permitting. Um, I think, yeah.
I don't think it's challenging. I mean, you have a business, it has a business model and it projects this many people working there.
I think a lot of these.
It may not come true, but it's not that hard to predict that.
I, I think a lot of these spaces are going to be built on spec, so they're going to, you know, design spaces configured in different sizes. They're not going to have a, a lease in mind necessarily when they build it. So I can see this being, you know, somewhat challenging to, you know, operationalize. I think we could, if we wanted to retain something that, uh, supported job creation, you could change it to a certain percentage of floor area that is non-residential, but.
Now we're just reintroducing the one we just took out.
That's the one we just took out, you know, so I, I, I do think that, uh.
I, I'm in favor of removing. I, I think I agree with Ashton's viewpoint on this one. Show of hands for remove. Remove.
Okay. This one was grayed out, I think. Uh, I don't remember the conversation that preceded it, but we have the standard for city projects in our own, um, uh, you know, for, for projects that we do. You know, it is somewhat challenging to exceed energy efficiency by building codes sometimes, but I think that's why it was grayed out from the conversation before. Sorry, I can't support any more detail than that, but we have a resident expert that might be able to fill us in on how.
I think it's a good idea and, um, you know, energy modeling can, can demonstrate this to the planning department.
Is 15% appropriate, do you think, Peter?
Yeah.
In favor? Show hands. Keep, move on.
I had keep, although I, I just, we just did another, uh, affordable one where, which we made it 50%. And so I might be saying to staff that like these should be combined in some way.
These are different, um, uh, numbers. So 10% would be the total number of units. And the other one is, um, of the inclusionary or density bonus units.
Different percentage calculation.
So we removed this one. This one is, I mean, you could, you know, arrive at the same place, but 10, well, no, you couldn't arrive at the same place if you did 10% above inclusionary.
Can you go up to 15? No, okay. My, nevermind.
I mean, you know, this is duplicate of, of the density bonus also. It's.
It seems just like more confusing.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure how this improves the community benefits list and my vote would be to remove, given that we've covered this ground in so many different shapes and forms in other parts of our work. Show of hands for removing this.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, one that I would like to run through the filter of what is a partnership with the Wiat tribe? You know, is it, I don't know, just that they had an artist that provided the sign for the building or, you know?
Are there investors in the project?
Yeah, are they 50% investors or?
Or a workforce?
Something.
Staff have any clarity here, David?
I mean, I could, uh, suggest something that would be a bright line, but, um, I think the idea here was that they would be a significant partner in whatever was being proposed. I know that the, um, you know, the Wiat tribe's Dishkama, their housing, um, housing authority essentially, uh, has been, you know, active. They're doing a project in Eureka. So I could see them partnering with, um, you know, property owner and doing a project here. And so, um, the idea here was to incentivize that and make it so, you know, make it such that that type of project gets, uh, uh, community benefit points.
I, I think the question just is, what is partnership? And what do they, what, what level of involvement from the tribe qualifies as a partnership?
Something that I would recommend if you want to start refining out what constitutes a partnership in real great, great detail. Let's do that in a lot, a subsequent stage. But just generally, the idea here was something to the effect of Dishkama is coming forward, proposing a housing. Yeah, they're very involved. This is a.
In favor of this community benefit?
Can I ask a last clarifying question? We have a Urock housing project that just occurred in Arcata. Do we only want the Wiat or on this list right now? I don't know. I'm just asking.
The, the point I was going to make was maybe you want to change this to local Native American tribe. I mean, Blue Lake Grand Cherea and the Bay River Band also have tribal members with Wiat ancestry. And then, you know, we have.
Members in other, um, tribal affiliations or, you know, part Wiat tribal members in other tribal affiliations, but that those individuals don't speak for the sovereign tribe. And so, uh, in attempting to respect the sovereignty of the Wiat tribe on its ancestral lands, the intent was to, um, only provide a community benefit to that particular combination of, of project types.
Given that, I suppose that makes sense. Go ahead, Amanda. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll agree. And I would just suggest maybe the word co-developed with is a slightly more specific.
Show of hands in favor in this with amended language. Okay, keep.
Phew, July 1st coming pretty quick, 2027 here.
I'm a keep. I like this one. I like the, the race to build housing.
Yeah, 27. Rapid production application submitted prior to July 1, 2027.
That's, that seems pretty easy. That's, that seems pretty easy.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
Would this be written with some sort of rolling clock? I mean, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused how, you know, if a project is coming up, there's, you know, I, I guess I'm just a little confused how, how this could exist beyond the July 1 date.
I think the intention was that it wouldn't, that this is supposed to sort of incentivize immediate, like, yeah, take advantage of it now or it'll go away.
Show hands in favor of incentivizing quick development. Okay, keep.
And this would be adopted by resolution, so certainly it could be extended, but, you know, at, at this point, it would be shot clock.
Keep.
We already voted to remove this one because we have a great amount of bike storage required already. A fantastic amount of bike storage required already.
Ridiculous amount of bike storage.
No. To go on record and say, it's just adequate.
I'm a strong keep on the bus passes. I think this is great.
Agreed. Show of hands in support of bus passes. Easy keep.
I was also a keep on this, although I'm wondering if folks have concerns about specificity for this one, but.
I'm a hard keep on this one.
Me too.
Yeah, I think as presented because of the city standards.
Keep. Easy keep.
Okay, and this one we already included above.
Can I, now that we got to the end of the list, can I suggest one additional community benefit that was suggested by a public commenter? Colin Fisk wrote us all an email where he talked about, as a community benefit, the developer entering into, or not, like the lease of the project saying no car ownership or no car ownership within, no parking your car within a quarter mile of the project. And so what this would do would, when you stayed in the project, you wouldn't have your own personal vehicle. And that that would be a community benefit to the surrounding community by not adding, you know, more parking and more cars to the area. And if folks want to hear that better than what I just said, Colin wrote us an email where he talked about it.
I thought it was a good idea and very unrealistic.
There is a project in Tempe, Arizona where they're doing this right now. It's called Cul-de-sac. Everyone signed a lease saying that they wouldn't own a car and they all get on their bikes and the light rail, which we don't have, but still, we have these buses and the bus passes. See how these start to work together? Anyway, I think it's a cool idea.
I think it's a cool idea. It sounds aspirational and, and a ways off.
Agreed. Abby, thoughts on this one?
No, it sounds idealistic, but I don't know that I would. Yeah, I don't have much to say on it. I, I think it's just tough in living in the climate we live in and different ranges of families having different needs to not. I mean, it would take a certain type of person committing to not owning a car to look for that type of development. And I think it just maybe makes for a hairy situation.
Go ahead, Matt.
So I just, nothing on this list is ever required. What we're looking for here is a certain type of developer who wants to take a risk on this kind of development. And if that developer existed, would we want to say that that's a benefit to the city? To have this kind of aspirational development that doesn't, that assumes that the residents don't have a car?
That's a good point. They don't have to choose item number 32.
Show hands in favor of adding a community benefit whereby people agree not to own cars. Okay, maybe next time, Matt. Okay, that gets us through this list.
Yeah, congratulations, everyone.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Please.
So staff, you will go through and like review all of these?
Yeah, so ultimately, the community benefits program is going to be adopted by resolution. Planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council to adopt that resolution. And what you'll be looking at is a draft of that resolution when you make that recommendation. So before I bring this back, I'll go through, I'll clean up the language, I'll try and flesh out some of the detail. I'll put together a suggestion for how the points would be awarded. And then we'll come back and, and look at this another time. I anticipate that, you know, some of the, you know, minor tweaking at that point, you know, percentages and that sort of thing could happen. That at that point, clarifying details about, you know, the specific benefit will happen. And then you'll also, you know, recommend or modify the, the, the structure, how these benefits are going to be awarded at that time. So that'll come back in a subsequent meeting and you'll, you'll take a formal action on it. I would hope at that time, you know, unless there's, you know, serious misgivings about the work that you did tonight, that we're not making large structural changes and getting into, you know, the details that we've just covered. If you warm up to, you know, a suggestion made tonight or you have a new suggestion, those are always going to be options for discussion. But try not to cover ground that we've covered before.
Okay. Well, given that and given that it's seven o'clock, how's everyone feeling about tackling the local coastal element?
It, it seems like it's going to go very brief. Considering the lack of comment and feedback.
I did make comments which inadvertently didn't get included. So I have a few comments, but yes, it'll be brief.
Everybody okay diving into this?
I don't think it's going to be brief. I do have questions, but before, if we are going to dive into this, can we take a quick break?
I was just going to say the same thing. Yeah. Five minute. Come back at 7:15.
I'm gonna have to leave today at about 7:30, so.
Maybe we continue it. That way we can see what comments you had provided because it sounds like they didn't make it on there. And I know, I don't know that it's going to be brief. Right. Okay, I don't know.
Ashton? I'm just trying to get, we can kind of go either way with this. I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to weigh in. Do we want to launch into it? I guess if Peter has to leave, if we're going to go partway and then have to continue, then I would prefer to wait and start fresh. So we're either kind of committing to go maybe as late as 8:30 or a little later, or maybe we tie this off now and continue.
Let's start fresh.
Can I suggest that you do open up for public comments since it was on the agenda? It's not technically a public hearing, but some folks, we do have one person online. They may wish to comment. We have audience members here who may wish to comment.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you all for your comments and work getting through community benefits. I appreciate that. That was comprehensive and I feel good about that. Moving on to the next item is to consider the city's local coastal element and provide direction as necessary. Do you want to give a brief staff report?
I don't want to give a brief staff report, but what I do want to do is pass out the materials that I received. Got a, an email from Colin Fisk and for CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and then I also have Commissioner Lehman's. So I'll pass those out.
Okay. Okay, if I open public comment while you're doing that? Okay. I'm going to open public comment now for considering the city's local coastal element. If you're in person, please feel free to line up at the lectern. If you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. The clerk will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Feel free to state your name for the record. First speaker?
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry and I'm glad that we're discussing the coastal plan. It just seems sometimes we do things in a funny order. But I haven't seen this and my head's not wrapped around the specifics right now, but they've talked about talking about it and now we're talking about it, so yay.
Thank you for your comments. Someone online that would like to join?
They are not raising their hand.
Okay, given that, I'll close public comment and as a commission, we are electing to continue this to our next meeting. Can staff acknowledge?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Acknowledged.
Okay, given that, we'll move on to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members this evening? Matt?
I sent David an email about single stair reform. And he told me he would talk to the building department and sort of report out on that. Single stair, single stair building reform. I had asked David to talk to the building department and give a report back about that.
Great. Anybody else? Any correspondence from staff this evening?
I, I have no correspondence just yet. I'm really excited to provide some correspondence very soon.
Okay.
But can't do it just yet. We're waiting for confirmation.
Okay, okay. That was, that was exciting. Okay, in that case, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.